From Social Prosperity Partners, this is Community Catalysts. Welcome to Community Catalysts, the podcast that examines the qualities of community leadership and the many paths and forms it can take. I'm your host, Matt Laraman. Before we get going, be sure to follow or subscribe so you never miss an episode. Today, I'm honored to welcome Cheryl Mays, an elected member of the Board of Education for Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools. I'm particularly looking forward to seeking her insights on navigating what seems to be the increasingly complex responsibilities and pressures of holding office in the realm of public education. Cheryl, welcome to Community Catalysts.
Good morning, Matt. Thank you so much for the invitation. I appreciate it.
I'm glad to have you here. And I also want to begin by acknowledging that you and I met just a few weeks ago at the annual Tennessee School Boards Association Conference, where you joined me as a guest panelist on my From Conflict to Conversation workshop. And we presented that before an audience of, I think, 600 school board leaders. And it was a really interesting time to have that conversation just two days after Election Day.
Yes, it was very interesting. And the conversation was amazing, very engaging.
Well, we're going to talk more about that in just a second, Cheryl. But maybe I could just ask you just to walk through some of your background first. What inspired you to run in the first place?
So initially, I ran and I started serving in 2010. And that was, I served until 2014, and then I stepped away. So initially, what prompted me to run initially was my service in the community. I have had and have continued to serve in the community as an organizer, whatever that looks like. I tried to organize in my community. What I discovered in 2010 was that the individual who was then currently serving on the school board in my district was moving on to a different political seat. And she talked to me and she said, I think you'd be great for this. And I thought, you know, I don't know about serving in a political office. That's just not my thing.
You had never run for public office before?
I'd never run for public office, had no desire to run for public office. What I knew, though, was that I was an education advocate from a very, very long time ago. And at that time, I had three small children. Well, they weren't small. They were, you know, middle school, but they were small enough. I knew that I had spent a lot of time dedicated to their education, and I wanted to make sure that I was always there for my children to support them in that area. And so I basically just told her, the person who was in that seat, I said, you know what, I'll have to talk this over with my family because this is not a path that I'm interested in going down. And I had a conversation with my children and my daughter, who is the middle child, and she is so rambunctious, I absolutely adore her. She said, Mom, you've been doing this for us all our lives. Maybe it's time you did it for the rest of the children in this city. And with that conversation, I said, well, I guess I have my blessing from my children. And I ran. And that was during a time that Nashville was, I won't say basic, but we had, that was the beginning of the implementation of charter schools in Tennessee. And Nashville was, you know, pretty new to the process. And so there was not a lot of opposition when I ran. I ran unopposed the first time I ran. During those four years, we saw the increase in the charters that were moving into the city. And yes, the last two years of my service, I did serve as the chair for the Board of Education. Stepped away in 2014. And what made me come back was representation. I'm very big on making sure that our babies, I call all the children my babies. So when you hear me refer to my babies, I'm talking about the 82,000 children that are in Metro Nashville Public Schools. So in 2020, 2021, I had had enough of the state of the Board of Education at that time that was very dysfunctional. And the person who was representing my district in particular, I was questioning what that looked like. You know, I think a lot of people had started coming to me saying, all right, it's time to get a new school board member. Would you be interested in running again? And I said, well, I don't know, I kind of like my life where it is right now. I'm not in political office. I can say and do what I choose to do when I want to do it. And so I was very hesitant. But at the same time, I was looking for someone who might be interested in running for that seat, who would be there for the right reasons. And that was, you know, to support outcomes and to advocate for the children in this district. And as you can imagine, things have gotten a lot stranger in education, these, in this current space that we're in. And so there were a lot, the folks that I talked to were a little hesitant because of all the political push and pull that was happening in education. And what I knew is that we by no means could continue the representation that we had. So at the last minute, I decided, okay, well, here's the opportunity. God is presenting it to me. I may as well do it. And a big part of that, Matt, is at the time, I was working for a congressman. I was running the Nashville office for the retired Congressman Jim Cooper. And he was running for reelection. And I knew that if I were going to be working for him, that I would not be able to run for an election, run for a seat. So that's why I spent a lot of time looking for someone who would be interested in running for that office. But then he decided not to run for reelection. And that let me open, left me open to run for this seat again. So I thought, well, I may as well put my money where my mouth is at this point. I knew that I was not thrilled with the representation. And I knew that I wanted to get someone who understood what that seat was about, what it meant to represent the families and the children in this district. And so I ran again.
Tell me more about that. What do you mean when you say to get someone to represent? What does represent mean in this context?
For me, it means making sure that you are open and listening to the needs of the community and the families in general. And where I am in District Six, I have a very high population of non-English speaking and immigrant students and families that live in my district. And when I say represent, that means that I need to make sure that I'm aware of the needs, the educational needs of every family that are in my district, and making sure that I'm advocating for those needs. And so when I say represent, I mean literally, every single family that lives in this district should have, should feel like they have a voice at the table.
You told me as we were preparing for today, that the district that you represent is the most diverse of any of the districts in the Metro Nashville Public School system. So what does it mean to be proactively representing? How do you, as a leader, make those connections? What does it mean to actually represent this diverse population?
That means showing up. And that's the best way that I can say it, showing up. And I put myself in places where I need to be to understand what the needs are. And that means going to neighborhood events, going to school events, talking to parents, and asking them, what can I do to help you? What are some of the issues that you're seeing right now in education in this city? How can we figure out a way to get around that, or get through that, or resolve it completely? So showing up is a big part of what I do. And I show up a lot, which is why this is the, this is the time, at the end of the year, that I take some time to just sit back and sort of, you know, reset myself.
Cheryl, you explained that when you decided to run for office for the first time, that your kids said to you, you've been advocating for us all this time, it's time for you to do it for all the other kids here as well. But I want to go back even further than that because that advocating for your kids, for all the kids, I understand that early in your journey to leadership, you were on a visit to, was it Buenos Aires, Argentina? And that you had an experience that impacted not just your journey to leadership, but it changed the trajectory of your life. Could you tell us that story?
Absolutely. That was during the time where I decided to go back to school to get my master's degree. I got my master's degree at Lipscomb University here in Nashville. And a part of that program, at the end of the program, your cohort would choose a trip to go to a different country to learn how to do business in that particular country. I chose South America because that's, you know, one of the countries I've never been to. So I was like, let me just see what this is like. Buenos Aires, Argentina was the place where we decided to go. And on this trip, it was about a 10-day trip. On the ninth day of the trip, we went to a, a community that is, the best way that I can describe it is a community that has a large number of nonprofit organizations in one community setting. And it was, from what I understand, the poorest area of the city that we were visiting. And we were visiting just to offer support, learn about the culture, you know, whatever we could do. And this particular day, it was a rainy day. And they have an after-school, a before and after-school program at this community. And this particular day, because it was a rainy day, the kids were not outside. It was after school. They were inside doing artwork and whatnot. And important to the story is that there were 20 of us on this trip, and I was the only woman of color on this trip. And as we went into the community, it was a classroom setting. There were probably 15 or 22 graders that were in this classroom doing artwork. And so a few of my colleagues and I walked into the classroom just to observe. And we were standing in the back, and the teacher introduced us. And we all said what our names were. She was speaking Spanish. And so at the end of the introduction, one little girl at the front of the, at the front of the room turned around, and she asked us in her language what our names were. And, you know, again, we introduced ourselves. And so at the end of that, I asked her, I said, well, what are your names? And each of the children introduced themselves to us. And the same little girl, who I call my Argentine angel, turned around and looked at all of us. And she looked at me, and she looked at my colleagues. And she said something to me in her language, and she did this. And I said, I asked the teacher, I said, what did she say?
Wait, she touched her face while she did that?
She touched her face when she did that. And I asked the teacher, I said, what did she say? She said, your skin is beautiful. And so I said to the teacher, I said, please tell her for me that I think her skin is beautiful as well. And there was something about that exchange that changed everything about what I was doing. After that exchange, I came back to the US. Two weeks later, I had a meeting with my then-manager. It was to talk about our KPIs for the upcoming fiscal year. And we sat and we talked about it. And he just started talking about the team's KPIs and my personal KPIs. And at the end of that conversation, he said, well, do you have anything to say? And I said, yes, I do. I need to let you know that I'm going to turn in my resignation. This was on a Thursday. I said, I'm going to resign from this, this position. I said, you need someone who wants to be in this particular position, and I need to be someplace where I need to be. And it's important to understand that my manager at the time was very understanding. And he knew how much community service meant to me. In fact, he had told me probably about a year before that, that that was where my heart really was. So he understood that I was, that was my passion, that was my love. And so he said, are you sure? I said, yes, I'm sure. I know that this is not where I need to be. I came home that day and I said, all right, I'm going to take 30 days to not do anything. I want to just get this corporate America mindset out of my, my headspace. I remember in September that year, I got up right after the Tuesday after Labor Day, and I said, all right, Ms. Mays, man, you got to get it together. You got to figure something out. And I put flip charts all around my home office wall. And I just started writing. I wrote about what I wanted to do, what I didn't want to do, the skills I had, the skills that I wanted to have, some of the things that I've always wanted to do. The next step for me was to pull it all together and see if it was something, a viable plan. And I did that. And it actually, it looked pretty good to me. And so I had a friend of mine who's been in the business world for quite some time, review it. And she said, oh, my gosh, this is great. This is going to be great. So I was like, well, we're going to see about that. And the next step was creating a name. And I've been doing it since that day. And it's been absolutely the joy of my life.
Is that My Toolbox Consulting?
My Toolbox Consulting.
Tell us about that. Tell us what that, what that business, what emerged from that experience?
Well, I'll tell you how I got to that place. While I was working in corporate America, I had the opportunity to help develop a community outreach program. And what that looked like was helping mentor young people and helping guide them on their employment tracks and their career tracks. That was a part of my business. And I knew that I wanted to give back in that way to young people.
Is it leadership development in the corporate world, or were you thinking leadership development in the civic space too?
All of the above. And that leads me to, you know, the other piece of my life. I have many jobs, Matt. I have many jobs. But my business was grounded because I had done the work with young people in that leadership development space for probably six or eight years by that, by then. And so I knew that that was where my heart lied. And I wanted to help develop that. And that was just the natural progression when I started thinking about my business. Now, the civic engagement piece of it came a little bit later, after I had served in office for a while. And so what I've discovered is that whenever someone asks me for advice, two things come to mind. I always tell people this, especially if you're running for political office, but in any form, in any walk of life, you can use these two pieces of advice. Never make a promise you can't keep and never compromise your integrity. It's very simple. And if you do one, you will naturally do the other.
Are there early examples in your own experience that tested you, that you learned this from doing it, or, or, you know, being presented the opportunity? Can you, can you speak candidly about how you came to realize those two were such important lessons?
Absolutely. And most of that is in my, in my experience as an elected official. So going into, when I decided to run for school board seat, I had to know for sure because I'm a type A personality, personality, and I like to know what I'm getting into. So I did the research on what a school board member does and what they can't do. And, you know, basically, we are not there to run the schools. We are not there to, you know, change what's happening in the schools. And we have no decision on personnel. We support, we have one employee, and that is the director of schools. And that is the person that we are managing and monitoring on a consistent basis. For me, once I was elected to the school board seat, I had a lot of people who had personal grievances. And one thing about being a school board member, or, or being in that elected position, is that families don't always understand that it's not just about their child. Because when a parent has an issue, it's about that issue with their child, and that's the issue they want you to solve, regardless of whatever else is happening in the world. That is the issue. And I, I understand that, and I totally get it. You know, as a parent, I get that. If I've got an issue with my child, I want this resolved. And so never making a promise you can't keep started there.
Cheryl, I want to ask if you could help me articulate something. I've never been good at explaining this. I understand what you just said, that parents come in thinking that the education system exists for the benefit of their children. But as a school board member, you're thinking about the benefit of an educated citizenry, of graduating students who can function in, function in society, function as society, preparing them for higher education, or for the work world, or just to be citizens of our country. How do you think of the constituency to which you are most accountable?
Outcomes. How do we get these students, who may be English learners, to the point of graduating and going on to college, if that is so, if that is their desire, or going on to career? What do we have to do and what programs have to be in place to support them in that goal? That, a big part of that starts with having that conversation with those young people and their families, and saying, what is the goal? You can't know what somebody wants unless you actually have a conversation with them about what it is they want. That's one of the things that I say to people all the time. We represent young people. Our clientele are, you know, K-12 students. That's our clientele. Now, how do I represent these young people without knowing what they want? You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, it could be something as simple as a sports program. If we, as adults, decide that this sports program is the one that needs to be in every single school in our district, and it's going to be great, and we could send these children on to, you know, whatever, but we don't ask the kids that they're interested in playing this sport, it's a total waste of time.
What I think I'm hearing you say is that, on the one hand, it's great to be grounded in outcomes. But if those outcomes aren't also grounded in the interests and the expectations of your customers, of the kids who are in the program, you can't expect them to sign off on outcomes if they don't see how it's relevant to them and the way they want to spend their time.
It's a really delicate dance, to be perfectly honest with you. Because you have to, you have to, while you are supporting outcomes, and while you are trying to grow all the students academically, you still have to be able to make sure that they see how these outcomes are going to positively impact them. One of the things that I've learned from corporate America and from education is that we quite often use terminology that the general populace just doesn't get, because they don't have to. I want to have a simple, basic conversation that we can both understand so that, and it helps me, because if I had that basic conversation with the parent, it helps me understand what their real needs are, as opposed to walking into a room and speaking in education language that, at the end of the day, nobody's going to understand.
I want to ask you, what inspires you to continue serving as a school board member despite so much division and cynicism and really profoundly difficult challenges? I mean, what makes the effort and the sacrifices worthwhile?
The children. That's it, the children. That absolutely makes every single thing that I do worth it, even more than anything. I just had a conversation last night with a neighbor of mine, and we were talking about how things are going on the school board. And she asked me, well, why do you keep doing it? And I said, the children. And for me, we're getting to the time of year where we're starting to seriously think about graduations in May. And, you know, the, the high school seniors are starting to get into senioritis and get into that mode of, I'll be graduating soon. And nothing, when we talk about outcomes, the most beautiful thing is to see how the work that you're doing is, you know, it comes to fruition. And graduation is that time of year where I feel like every single one of those children that graduate are my own baby. And it is, that's why I do it, the children. And that is my reward. Going to those graduations, seeing the looks on the faces of those students and those families when those children graduate, that is exactly why I do what I do. It is, nothing could ever replace that. And it is like I won the lottery every single time I see it.
Cheryl, this is one of the things that distinguishes school board service from being on a city or a town council. I, I work with a lot of city and town councils, and they're making really important decisions for their communities, building wastewater treatment facilities and roads and things that are going to stand for 20, 50 years or longer. But the people who I know who serve on school boards, especially as you say, when, when the, the thing that keeps you going is the kids, is recognizing that it is a precious short amount of time that those kids are gonna be in the school district, right? 12 years, you know, at its fullest, that you have the chance to impact their lives and set them up for a lifetime of success. That, am I hearing you right? That's what drives you, this preciousness of time?
Yeah, absolutely. And if you get a bonus, it is generally, so the beautiful thing about it, our terms on the school board here in Nashville are four years. And for me, one of the most beautiful things that ever happened to me was, in my first term as a school board member, I started in 2010, and four years later, I rolled off. But it was at that last graduation, the year that I rolled off, I attended a graduation, and the young people, and here's the bonus, the young people, two young people in particular came up to me and they said, Ms. Mays, you've been with us since we were freshmen in high school, and you have been with us our entire high school career. And it has been such a good time. And we are so thankful that you've been there. And that is the bonus. You know, when you can see the progression of these young people from the time they walk into a high school setting, and you know the families, and you know the kids, and you've spent time with them. And it's not about being recognized, it's being recognized for who you are, but what you do. And so being able to be there with these kids, and they know, and I've told them all, I expect to get invitations to your graduations, to your weddings, to whatever that looks like in the future. I want to make sure that we are still connected because I will be here for you no matter what. You will always have my number. You will always have a way of reaching out to me. And in fact, one of the really amazing things is that I've seen some of the kids that have, that I have worked with go on into adulthood, and I see them in their current jobs, and I see what they're doing, you know, outside of going to high school. And it's an absolute treasure. That's the bonus. That's why I do what I do, because I know, I see the potential in these young people, and I do whatever I can to help them see it too.
What advice do you give to someone considering stepping forward to offer their own leadership, whether that's at a school board, or a city council, or a nonprofit organization in the community? What's your advice? What's your best advice?
Do it. But as, as I said before, the two pieces of advice, never make a promise you can't keep and never compromise your integrity. If you're interested in stepping up, I will be there with you 100%. I'll walk you through what that looks like. If you want to run for office, I've been a candidate a couple of times. I'll be more than happy to give you my advice. And you talk to you about my experience. But if you want to serve in the public, do it. But understand that there is something that comes with that. Service is a big part of this. And if you're not willing to serve selflessly, it's probably not where you want to go.
Cheryl, it's time for the lightning round part of our interview, in which I'm going to ask you a series of questions and challenge you to answer them in just one sentence or less. You ready?
Hmm, yeah, let's go.
Cheryl Mays, describe your leadership style in just three words.
Organized, impactful, and effective.
And what's the best leadership advice you've ever received in one sentence?
A lady knows when to leave a party.
Hey, I have to ask, for a first time visitor to Nashville, what's an experience they absolutely shouldn't miss?
Karaoke at Princess Hot Chicken.
Oh, that sounds, I've missed that. I'll have to come back for that. Cheryl, if you could instantly gain one new skill, what would it be?
The ability to read minds.
How do you recharge yourself, especially during challenging times?
I move myself into a solitudinal type of place and just listen to my music.
If you could implement one policy change in local, state, or federal public education overnight, what would it be?
This is not really a policy, but I think if I could implement a policy, it would be to mandate that education is fully funded in the state every single year.
Cheryl Mays, if you could spend one hour in conversation with any leader, past or present, who would you choose? And what's a question that you would ask?
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And the one question that I would ask, how do we continue to do this? And let me just give you a little context to that, too, because I told you, again, I have lots of jobs. I am also the planning committee chair for the MLK Day Planning Committee, which is a citywide event. And we, I'm in the middle of planning MLK Day right now. So it always comes to mind this time of year, because there's so many things that are still hanging out there that could be done better. I'd love to hear from him, what he thinks about where we are right now and what we need to do. What can we do better? Well, how do we continue to create a place where all of us feel like that we are a part of all of us? More inclusion, as opposed to, especially now, as opposed to where we are in this world right now. I think there's a place for inclusion, inclusionary thinking amongst all of us. I'd love to hear from him what he thinks about where we are right now and what we need to do. What can we do better? Well, how do we continue to create a place where all of us feel like that we are a part of all of us? More inclusion, as opposed to, especially now, as opposed to where we are in this world right now. I think there's a place for inclusionary thinking amongst all of us.
That's beautiful. Cheryl Mays, thank you so much for sharing your leadership journey with us. It's been a real privilege to visit with you.
Thank you, Matt. It's been a privilege to chat with you this morning. And I thank you so much for the opportunity.
A special thank you to Cheryl Mays, District Six School Board Member of the Metro Nashville Public Schools, for joining us today. of the Metro Nashville Public Schools for joining us today. If you enjoyed this episode, please rate and review it on Apple Podcasts or wherever you listen. It helps others discover the show. This episode was edited by Nick "Living the Dream" Tantillo. Our executive producer is John Little. I'm Matt Lerman of Social Prosperity Partners. If you have a question or a comment about today's topic, I'd love to hear from you. Reach me at 602-688-2724 or matt, M-A-T-T, at socialprosperity.us. Know someone with an inspiring or instructive community leadership story? Let's connect. Click the podcast guest link in the notes. I'm always looking for impactful guests. Today's conversation with Cheryl Mays reminds us of the courage and commitment it takes to step forward in leadership, especially in the face of challenges. Whether you're already leading or considering how you can make a difference in your community, let Cheryl's story inspire you to take that next step. Thanks for listening. We'll be back soon with another Community Catalyst.